Good evening. Is that on? Good evening. Please stand while Cheryl Clemmons and Sharon Shadrick lead us in prayer in the pledge. Thank you.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this time tonight. We pray for your wisdom, your knowledge, and your understanding. We pray, God, that your peace would abide in this house. In all that we do and say, God, let it be done for your glory and for the children of this county. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge, please. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the January 29th School Board Meeting. The Sunshine Law requires that the school board meet in performance duties in public. This meeting in public is an opportunity for the board to discuss and make decisions around its slated agenda. Citizens have the right to observe the meeting and hear all comments made by the board members. School board member meetings, however, are not a meeting of the public. An opportunity for the public to comment during meetings. On behalf of my fellow board members, at this time, I would like to invite and encourage members of the audience to sign up regarding district issues. Please begin by stating your name. You will be limited to three minutes. This is your three minutes. The clock will not be stopped during your three minutes. We will not be acting on the issues tonight unless they are part of the agenda. If you have a question, we will refer you to the proper person. This is not a time to poll the board. We will listen and take notes. As you'll look over, well, we had our contact information up there before the clock came on. We appreciate your support. Daryl Cherry.
My name's Daryl Cherry. Madam Chairman, I take exception to your comments last night when you used your platform to criticize an employee of this district for their comments during the special session of January 24th. I cannot believe you would ridicule and attempt to intimidate any employee of this district for publicly expressing their opinion to this board. Could your attempt to intimidate be because those comments exposed what little thought this board has given to resolving the budget deficit? And spoke against the personal agenda you and others on this board are attempting to push through? Why would you not welcome and consider the input of the personnel that truly love and serve the students of this county? When you singled out an employee and characterized their comments as disrespectful performance, you exemplified exactly what's wrong with the majority of this board. Your ridicule showed that you took these comments personally rather than hear the message that was being presented. So let me reiterate for you. If you remove the bus monitors, you'll lose weighted funding. If you remove the listed support positions, student services will be negatively impacted. What's being done in other similar schools is not working in those similar schools. The point was, there are consequences to adopting this recommendation that this board has not considered. You were supposed to be the leader of this board. It's time you own your responsibility and spend your time drafting solutions that did not involve job loss rather than attacking the truth. I'm yet to hear a meaningful recommendation from this board on this issue. And you and other members of this board are using this budget deficit to promote your own personal agendas by cutting the positions of employees that you seem to have a biased personal vendetta against. Let me remind you, no public servant shall use their office for personal gain. Please review Florida Statute 112.3136, misuse of public position. Ma'am, you're not in this position to serve yourself or your friends. You're there to serve the students of this district and the citizens of Madison County. Respect is not something that's given. It must be earned. Apparently, you have not earned the respect of the employee you ridiculed. Mr. Daniels, I applaud you for your words concerning truth and light. I believe you and Ms. Bell are seeking to stand in the light. Let me remind you both what Jesus teaches us in Matthew, Chapter 7, verses 15 through 20. Beware the false prophets who come to you dressed as sheep, appearing gentle and innocent, but inwardly are ravenous wolves. Each member of this board must decide for themselves what's best for the students of this district. Be the leader you're called to be and do not blindly follow those with false agendas-
Thank you, Mr. Cherry.
-of those who would attempt to deceive if those board members are pushing an agenda that does not make sense. Please question their motives and the overall impact to our blessed students.
Excuse me, we don't want to have to remove you from the room. Your three minutes are finished.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Fulmer.
I also have a copy of what I put in front of y'all. And on the first line, I want to be publicly known, first of all, I would like to apologize if any of you felt attacked last week. School bus drivers are often forgotten in this district, and we do take it personally. Yet, none of you still have made an attempt to walk down the back stairs and introduce yourselves to the Transportation Department. We're told when we're first trained and every year at our end service that we are the first and last face of education in a child's eyes on most days. We have passion for our job. We don't do it for the money, and neither does Ivan Johnson. I've said my prayers, and now I'm here to plead with you guys to leave Ivan in charge of transportation. He is the heart of transportation. He pumps the blood through the rest of us as the body. Without the heart pumping, the body dies. I'll give you an example, and this is the sheets that I printed out for you guys, of Ivan the Great. Parents in community and all his coworkers will tell you that he does all these things, day in, day out, with a wave and a smile. Here's approximately 80 reasons to keep him. He is far, far more worth than his salary. Let me start by saying we have an average of 33 school bus routes, 27 drivers. That's not common core math, so it's pretty easy to figure out. There's only seven school bus drivers, including Ivan, and the other six have also other jobs. So they're not readily available on call all the time. Two sub-drivers with county vans or vehicles. Two school bus aides that are on special transportation only. The first page is, you'll see on the top of it, it says 1:29:19 PM. Bus 18, Ivan. Bus 3, take these first. Bus 23, then take these. 16, take 23 to the high school. 29, Calvin. 32, Shadrick. 44, Rose. Van 45, Sheila. Car 110, Tornisha. To explain this mildly to you guys, that's five drivers short, and Ivan just covered three routes. Ivan drove Bus 18 to take Bus 3 students home first. Then he went and got Bus 23 students from the central school and had Bus 16 take 23's high school students. I don't think anybody else is up for that challenge. And Ivan does it with a wave and a smile. Now, on the other papers, I started his evening approximately 11:00 PM on the morning before. I know I'm not going to have time to read all this. That's why I made you guys the copies. This is what he does on a daily basis. We don't ask for a lot of rewards for our jobs as bus drivers. We just ask to be recognized. And we ask, when we need help, we need it. But we always need the support. We need the support of parents, administrators, staff, teachers, the whole community. We feel like we're at the bottom, and we're always forgotten. But then, when something comes up, we're first to be brought up. It's not fair at all. Again, my apologies. Y'all have a blessed evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Fulmer. Mr. Williams.
Good evening. I'm George Williams, a 33-year employee of the Madison County School District, retired from the Lee Elementary School. Madam Chair, if I understand you correctly, you're saying that we get a chance to talk, but we don't get a chance to ask questions?
Correct. This is your three minutes.
In my three minutes, I believe I ought to have the ability to ask questions.
If you'd like us to talk during your three minutes, that's, but it's your three minutes.
Okay.
I mean, that's, we're not stopping the clock. If you would like me to talk for three minutes, I could-
I asked you a question last night, and I liked the response from that question that I gave to you last night relative to public comments according to your policy.
And we've made some-
Will you please respond?
We've made some changes tonight.
You obviously made changes to seduce or to keep people from further speaking and further bring in clarity to this whole process. That will never get where it needs to go. Having said that, I will quickly move to this. This district, with the first calculation from the State Department of Ed for the FEFP at the beginning of this school year, was up 45 roughly FTE, which brought in additional monies. By the time we got to the second count, we were down by $38,000. By the time we got to the third calc at the end of December, the FDLE or the Department of Ed showed that we were down in funding resources to Madison County of $1,000,057,000. That is very important information of how we move from 45 up to basically stay. And then, we end up with a deficit within a month of 162 FTE. I would like to know where those FTE went. Why isn't there some kind of tracking mechanism that when people withdraw from school, we know where they're going? You have to send their records? So you should be able to follow them through that process. We don't know that. Nobody's able to tell us where that FTE goes. Understanding that the district is caddled with about 2,700 FTE, but we know about 500 of that goes to our charter schools. The whole issue is this. There is not clarity in this process. And people act upon emotions, including myself, because there's no clarity and understanding of how this process really works. I would really like to ask Mr. Copeland some questions, but since you are not going to allow that, I'll be glad to ask him in person. And the next time I get a chance to talk, I will reveal his answers here in person. Because these folks, this county, need to hear the real truth of this matter. We've been putting Band-Aids on this problem for years. It's time to stop it.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Annette Kinsey.
I'm Annette Kinsey. I'm the Suwannee River Service Unit Director. I work very closely with Jetta Roberts, who is ill tonight, with Madison County Education Association. I also work with eight other local unions in neighboring districts. On Thursday, after the special board meeting and the discussion of furlough days, Madison County Education Association wanted to do a survey to see how the faculty and staff felt about furlough days. I put one out on Survey Monkey. We also, we included one for the ESP's instructional staff and one for administration. On the ESP and instructional staff, we had 140 respondents. 26 were ESP, 114 were instructional staff. Of those, 121 were willing to take furlough days. 80% were willing to do two furlough days, and 48% for four furlough days. On the administration, we had 42 respondents. 35 were willing to take furlough days. 78% were willing to do two furlough days, and 60% were willing to do four furlough days. We do realize that some of our educational support professionals have not had access to a computer, so we will be putting out a paper copy of the survey now that we have an indication that a majority of the faculty and staff that were surveyed are in favor of furlough days. In speaking with Dr. Pickles earlier this week, she had indicated that other districts had given her the information that furlough days had to be included as a liability. My, FEA, Florida Education Association colleagues and I have looked through Red Book and Gatsby, looking for a regulation or technical guidance concerning the liability of furlough days. We have not been able to find any of that. We would like for this to be thoroughly investigated before we say we cannot do furlough days because it has to be hired as a liability or has to be written off as a liability, and also to research the possibility of other solutions that can be done. Your faculty and staff have shown their willingness to sacrifice to help other of their employees keep their jobs and to help the district. The parents, students, the faculty, staff, and administration in Madison County have worked too hard over the last few years to raise the school grades in Madison County for Madison County to become the next charter school district and the next Jefferson County and the next domino that the Commissioner of Education wants to flip over and start the cascade down through the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kinsey.
Madam Chair, if I may address Ms. Kinsey. I did speak to someone at DOE at, actually, at 5 o'clock this afternoon. If we do anticipate paying back any of the furlough days, then yes, it does have to be recorded as a liability. As long as we do not plan on paying back the furlough day money, then it's, we do not have to record anything. So as long as all the staff understand that, we are fine. We do not have to record it.
Thank you, Dr. Pickles. Mr. Webb? Mr. Mob, Laura Mobley?
Good afternoon, and thank you for this moment. The reason I'm here to speak on behalf, I am a bus monitor. We have two bus monitors. And I don't know if the board know what a bus monitor actually do on the bus. I'm kind of surprised Ms. Charetta Bell haven't let y'all in on what we actually do. I'm not just riding a regular school bus. I myself have a special child. And I remember at our last meeting on the 24th, Ms. Cherry, she might not, glad the chair was here. But I remember when my child was a kid, Ms. Cherry came to my house to make sure everything that we needed or he needed was in place for us. And for, I know Charetta says she drove the bus for 28 years. And I am grateful that they had someone on the bus with her to monitor these kids. Because I know what I'm talking about when we talk about a kid with disability. My child was born with a four-piece syndrome. He couldn't do all the things that he do now. Still, I, myself and my husband, we have to feed, bathe, and whatever he do. But we take him everywhere with us. He go to church, he out in the community, he go to the restaurant, he go to ball games. But if it wasn't for this program that's in place in school, our kids wouldn't be able to do all this. Don't set our kids by, please. You can take my job from me, but just remember, if that child is on that bus having a seizure, choking, whatever going wrong with this kid, just pray that it's not your kid. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mobley. Mr. and Mrs. Galados?
I'm going to share half of my time with Ms. Kelly because she was-
Because I was at home taking care of one of these special children.
So I'll make it quick. Because I did, except for one board member whom I won't call out, but will say did not call me back, and I'm hoping will call me back this week, spoke to everybody. And I wanted you guys to really know that there's a couple of reasons why it's so, you have so many parents coming to the board who don't understand the technical difficulties of doing school. One of them is that you don't have a district parent advisory committee, which you should have on an ongoing basis. So that when you decided to do this, you could have gone to the parents and said, "Oh, excuse me, we're about to cut this and that. What do you think about that?" That was the purpose of that. And if, we had some in the school level. I don't know if they have them anymore. I fought for them for a long time. But we need to remember that we can cut in half some of the bad stuff that happens if we just involve people on the front end rather than the back end, particularly parents. We only want what's best for our kids. We only want them to have what they need to succeed, not the kids sitting next to them. So, go on.
I came to you last week. I don't know if you remember my little one. She is autistic. And if you cut paraprofessionals and you disrupt our ESC department, our children will suffer. It's an extreme safety issue as well. I actually would love to be up here pleading for you to hire more. We need more, absolutely not less. This is why, right here. These children cannot go to school functions alone. They may wander down a hallway. They may wander off a bus instead of going into the halls, into the parking lot. We have great ESC services here in Madison County. It is a very positive. A lot of people like to say negative things about Madison County, and our ESC department is not one of them. And I plead to you to not mess with it and do the research and ask us how well it does work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galagos and Ms. Uphold. Ladies and gentlemen, we are here to do some work tonight. We, this is a workshop. We won't be making decisions tonight. We're going to explore many different possibilities. We'll be scheduling another meeting to make the decisions later on this week. I plead with you, you can hear me. The people at home can hear me. When there's any background noise, I cannot hear what's going on up here. I'm sorry. So please, if you have to talk, and I realize it's an emotional issue, if you have to talk, please step out in the hallway. I'm not saying go outside, because I know we don't want to do that. But I mean, I'm just saying, I'd appreciate if you would keep the noise down. Thank you very much. I want to remind the board and the audience, these were Dr. Pickles' recommendations. That's what, that's what boards do. We look at the recommendations. We don't make a decision that minute, the first time we see the recommendations. We've got to look at them. We've heard the public. We've given you all an opportunity. We've already had one workshop. This is the second one. And so, we have not ignored you. We, we, we are going to discuss it tonight amongst us. We're going to maybe be taking something off or adding something to it. This is our job. We've been accused of not doing our job. Believe me, we take this seriously. And as far as, again, I want to remind you, these are Dr. Pickles' recommendations. This is her job. Our job is to look at the position, not the people. I don't have a problem. I've been teaching here for 40 years. I've been in Madison for many years. I don't have a problem with the people. I never had a problem when I was teaching. I mean, there's, there's, it's nothing personal to me. You know, I can see if you, but let's just drop that. Okay. I want to say that we've had a lot of different, I've had a lot of different phone calls, a lot of different emails. We had some wonderful suggestions that we are definitely considering, some we'd already have considered. My mind went back, as a matter of fact, when I received those suggestions to, I think it was, maybe Mr. Williams probably knows the date, 2006, 2007, when there was a financial difficulties in the county. Mrs. Miller, Lou Miller, was the superintendent. It was all done very positive. You know, we, we had faith in Mrs. Miller. She wasn't berating anyone. She, we, she called us all together. We went to the North Florida Community College, all the employees. We were explained what was going on. Decisions were made, and there wasn't a problem. The board, I don't think, was scolded for doing anything. We're elected by the people. We take it very seriously. And I, it made us feel good, the employees, that she took the time and called us all together. We went to the college. We were explained the whole situation. There was, everything was out there on the table. And I thought, wow, I feel good about that, you know, that she, and it was done in such a positive way. I'm like, wow, she's a leader. I admire that. So tonight, what we're going to do, we're going to talk amongst ourselves. We're going to explore different possibilities. And, you know, hopefully, we'll come up with what's best for the whole county. Thank you. Board members, I, I, you're free to speak out. What we'll basically do is you tell your, what, how you feel about maybe something, and we'll take a poll and see if it's something that should be added or subtracted from the Dr. Pickles' recommendations.
Ms. Gibson, concerning the furlough days, now where, Mr. Reese, where does that stand? I mean, are we able to look at furlough days or?
I think you're certainly able to look at furlough days. And, you know, all of that would need to be looked at with the union. And I think the union has just said they're considering those positively, I think is what I understood. So, yeah, I think that's certainly on the table.
I would like for us to look at that and see how much we could get on that. That would allow us to keep people in place. I'm not saying that cuts may not have to come, but at least maybe we can make it to summer before the cuts have to be made. And people who are going to be cut, they're given time where they could find another job. Mr. Copeland, concerning the, the four days, I think you had said it was 196,000?
The four days?
Furlough, for four-day furloughs.
Yes, that's, that's roughly correct with the current contract balances that we have right now. It would, again, you're looking at about $50,000 a day to the general fund-
Okay.
-with a furlough day.
Did you add the school board members to dock our time for the furlough days, too?
I believe so, but if not, I will make sure that is done.
Well, what, I'd like to say, whatever the employees, whatever they take, we're taking as well. You know, it won't be- I'm not doing that to be-
You're in there as a general fund-
Thank you, but I, whatever, if they take a decrease, we take a decrease. Or at least, I mean, I won't speak for the board.
And Madam Chair, if I can, you, each board member would have to do that for themselves. You can't vote that on all the board members.
No, no, no. I'll speak for myself. That's right, now.
Madam Chair, if you will, I just have a question as well for Mr. Copeland. And it, and it's along the lines of where Mr. Williams was going with his questioning during his time in public comment. During his entire ordeal, I had a, it's just been bothering me how when we left on December the 22nd, we didn't, as a board, and me personally as a board member, we didn't have a clue that our FTE was significantly down as it was, is reported to us today, our fund balance. We didn't know we were in jeopardy of, you know, the fund balance being in jeopardy as it was presented to us. So when we met on January 4th at the board retreat, it was chaos. I want to know, and I, and I would appreciate it if you would kind of give us a thorough, a thorough explanation of how we got from December the 22nd to January the 4th, how the bottom fell out just in the span of two weeks without notifying us. I, I just don't, I just, I just don't, the dots aren't connecting for me. And I just want a little more clarity on that, if you will. So on December the 22nd, when we left- So on December the 22nd, when we left for spring break, basically, what was the fund balance?
Christmas.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Christmas, Christmas break. Well, at, on, on that date, just roughly, what was the fund balance?
Uh, the fund balance would have been around 1.5 million, which was the fund balance on the, the last financials, and that's a projected fund balance.
Right, right, right. Translated in percentages, if you will.
Uh, around 4.5, 4.7.
Okay, and that was December the 22nd, when we left for Christmas break. So at what point that you got, you, you all received the information to, to give you the, the inkling that we were in all of the jeopardy that we're, we're currently in?
We, we received the third count, final numbers from D O E, I think, on January the 11th, and...
And, and that was, I mean, we met on the 4th.
Yeah, we, we, we knew it was down at that point. And let me say this, I'm over finance and risk management, and I have my hands full, but I was, I will do a better job of leading things, but as far as the F T E numbers go, and, uh, you know, you have to rely on the school level, the people that are working with that. So it was an unforeseen adjustment. We've had issues with Skyward, we were, I know that our whole team was working through the December 15th period that you have to do edits on your F T Es, and I, I have a...
Am I directing the question to the right person? And should I, I mean, is, is there anyone else in a better position to answer the, those questions?
Mr. Daniels, we were making edits up until our final week of December 10th through the 14th. The finance office at D O E was calling us regarding making some final edits. And so we actually knew our transportation numbers were down, so we knew that amount. And so we were able to recapture, I think, eight F T E, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we knew transportation itself was going to be down.
Okay.
But that's it. We did not know, so it was then it was started questioning if transportation is going to be down, what else might be down.
Okay, and the, the final, or the official number that we were down, if, if I'm correct, is 162?
We were over projected by 45.
Okay.
Okay, if you will recall, and then we were actually student bodies down, 110, 111, some weird number because it's the points in there. So student bodies, we have broken it down by school, we can tell you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I did not bring those papers with me this evening.
Okay.
I know that Central is down, 80 bodies, Lee has lost bodies, the high school has lost bodies.
Okay.
James Madison and the D J Js, each of those, we have them all identified, which then does equate to our net of the 162.
Okay, I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, because the academy, they, they have a cap enrollment.
Yes, sir.
So, so we know they didn't go there. From what I understand, James Madison enrollment is down or declined as well, so we know they didn't go there. So are we saying that 100 and plus students have left the district and went to another district?
They went out of state, they, we had some out of county, we had homeschool, we had other district transfers, and then we had some other, and then we actually had some student deaths.
And, Mr. Daniel?
So we, we have, we have accounted for each one. We have gone back over each one, and we can tell you they've either transferred to another district out of state. Yes, we have accounted for them.
Ms., Ms. Daniels, Ms., Ms. Robin Hill has, had provided a, a summary to me, and I will be glad to share it.
Please.
But, but she had, she had broken down by school the students and why they are not there, for example, left the district, went to homeschool, and, and it's, again, it's surprising, we've never seen this in a 10-year span.
Okay, my, my question though, Mr. Copeland, my, my greatest concern is this. On December the 22nd, did we know this on December the 22nd?
I, I did not know this on December the 22nd.
Thank you.
Could I say one thing? I was quoted the other, last night by saying, it was, I felt like, I use the expression, I'm sorry I said it, on top of the world. You can take it any way you want to take it. As far as, when I say on top of the world, I feel like, well, things are going okay. And so in December, I guess you might say I was on top of the world. I mean, if you want, I mean, if you know what I mean. In other words, it, I didn't see the, feel the urgency. So I'm sorry I have to explain that expression, that I was actually, I don't know how to describe, anyway, if you were at the meeting last night, you know what I'm talking about. So I, if I have to explain that terminology, that's what it means. In other words, I wasn't in the depths of depression, I was feeling good. So that explains the top of the world.
Um, Mr. Daniels, if you would like to look at the screen, I, Ms. Hill did email me the physical body, so for all of the ones we have been able to identify, if you'll give, um, just a moment.
My, 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 again...
No, it just, it just shows whether they went out of state, public out of state, non-public out of state.
Again...
To another Florida, so all the ones we've been able to account for.
My, my greatest concern is the timeline. At what point, at what point we knew this? Because that's, that's significant.
When we first came back in January. I mean, I, we knew transportation was down.
I mean, 162?
Oh, no, no, sir. Actually, we did not know that until the report came out.
And the report came out on the 11th?
January 11th.
And that's after you told us we had this?
After. We were guesstimating, as I told you in the retreat, we were guesstimating. And that's all I had to do, I could guesstimate.
See, that's my problem. If, if we're going, if we have 35 people on the chopping blocks, and we're basically guesstimating that we may be down...
Excuse me, thank you.
I think we, it's, one of the things, Mr. Copeland, when, when we had our board retreat was, I mean, nobody could explain how we got here, what, what, I just don't know what happened, I don't know, I don't know. And we, we're not accountants, we don't know, we don't know the numbers like you all do. And so, I think instead of just kind of verbally saying, or speculating, or guesstimating, or what have you, we, you know, I get, the, the, we, we deserve to see in black and white what happened. Because the numbers may not be as bad as we guesstimated. And we may only have to reduce it by another amount, if we, if we're not totally 100% absolutely sure that the, you know, we are where we are, or the, or the, that, that deficit is where, where, what we basically projected.
Mr. Daniels, if you'll recall our December meeting, and I played this meeting and listened to the language I talked to you about, because I'm trying to come up with ways anyways to increase our fund balance. In December, we talked about how we can increase our fund balance for this upcoming year, 1920, when we know automatic steps come in. And I talked in the board meeting, Mr. Alford asked, how much do we need to plan to cut? He first mentioned 200,000. I said, I thought we needed to plan more aggressive, 500,000. We discussed the amount of our automatic step raises. This year, it was just over $260,000. We have to address those reoccurring step raises. July 1, they roll around again unless you negotiate something different with the union. So we have to plan for that. We discussed that back in December at Lee.
I, I remember that, I recall that.
So we discussed that, and we had already said in December, we needed to plan to cut 500,000 out of that. That was all before any of this.
Yeah, I, I recall us having a discussion on, uh, increasing the fund balance and, and making efforts to increase the fund balance. I, I, I remember that part. I'm just having a, a problem with the, the, the numbers. Because the, the number, and the reason why I'm going there is because the, it's, it's very significant, you know, it, it ties closely to the, the cuts and the, the, what, how, how much and to what degree. So, for example, if, if, if the fund balance is better than we projected, or the F T E count is lower than we guesstimated, then that's, that may be half of the list, or, you know, maybe other options that we can, we can explore to, to, you know, to, to make the pain less severe, so to speak.
I, I can understand your concern, Mr. Daniels. I was going to, I want to refer back to Mr. Copeland. I know he's spent hours and hours and hours. We also got that study that said that we are top-heavy, that we've got to make, you know, the enrollment has decreased over the years, I don't mean just six months ago. I mean, we, the enrollment has decreased in all the years, in all the schools throughout the years. And that's, but we still have the same people. I'm not talking about the teachers, you know, we, we, we need our teachers, there's no doubt about that. I'm talking about other positions. And so, did you want to say something, Mr. Copeland?
Well, I was, I was just going to say, uh, you know, it, it is going to be hard from what I see, from the number side, to make an adjustment that'll be a viable adjustment with a decrease in F T E. And let me say, Mr. Daniels, right now, the F T E forecasting process is started, and I was involved this morning more so than at, at the line level, and we look like we're level with the numbers we have now. So, as we project on out, it's likely that we're not going to see some influx of students, so we better plan as conservatively as we can. And I think what Ms. Gibson was getting back to is, we do need to do everything to get through this year, and, and, and so people can plan, but just from looking, it, it's going to be hard to fix the model without addressing compensation, which makes up 75% of your budget, and your facilities overhead, which, again, we're, we're built out for 3,500 students, and we're servicing less than 2,100. Those are not, you know, they're not pleasant things to address. But like we looked at the meeting before last, if you look at the 10-year trend, it's every single year, we have a deficit and a decline. And the last three years, we've had less of a decline, and if I don't have any audit adjustments for this past year, it'll be the first time our unrestricted fund balance went up in 10 years. But the fact is, our fund balance is over a million dollars less than it was 10 years ago, so a small deficit has a much bigger effect on it than we had there. And so, what we're trying to do is, is look out, look, see around corners and, and make the decisions before we're three weeks out from being out of cash. And, uh, so it's, and I think, I think everybody understands that, and, but we've got to, got to ease into this, and, and, they don't understand that the compensation is way, I mean, I mean, just as a, as a, as a benchmark compared to other similar districts.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. I'd like to take a look at, I'm taking a look at the list, I'll, I'll, I, in my mind, I looked at which positions, I'm not talking about people now again, which positions had contact with children, and which positions do not have contact with children. This is important to me. I want to take a look at the, um, the, the bus monitors, for instance. To me, they're valuable. You know, I mean, they, I know the children with disabilities are on the bus, and we know the value of having an extra hand, because the bus driver's driving the bus, basically. So I'd like to, in my mind, I'd like to take them off the list, and I don't know how my fellow board members feel about that.
Can I ask, Mr. Chris, why are the two bus monitors paid out of general fund? They're on E S E buses. Can't they be paid from E S E monies?
I will address that with Ms. Newman and be sure we're within the...
We, we have two E S E buses, we have two bus monitors. I worked in transportation, I started to work in the Transportation Department, Madison County, 1975.
Right.
It was required that an E S E bus have a monitor, they used to call them aids, have a monitor on the bus. So why are they paid out of general fund?
I will address that and, and get back with you, and if we can make a change there...
Because those buses are supposed to have somebody on there other than the driver, if they have any kind of handicap. I drove a bus with handicapped children. I did not have to have a monitor because they were only hearing impaired. So they were physically functional and medically functional. But, but these children are not always like that, and they're supposed to have a monitor.
Okay.
Ms. Bell, Ms. Bell may know something.
I think it's required that there be a bus monitor on the E S E buses.
I don't think it's an option. I think that it's the, the E S E law or whatever, it's, there's supposed to be a monitor on there.
I, I, I can address that, I can't tell you the answer to that, we've got 350...
And I know you probably don't have an answer, but, and if it's required, that a monitor be on an E S E bus, looks like they could be paid from some kind of E S E funding other than general fund.
Well, I, I appreciate that, and we'll address it, and if we can make that move, we'll definitely make that move, and we can, if we can make the move, we can recap it back to the first of the fiscal year, and, and move those funds to the I D E A. But I, I'll, I'll find out.
Mr. Copeland? What is, what is the total number we're needing to hit to get to the 3% or above it, where we're...
With, with the, with the budget revisions up preliminary for January, we're looking at close to $600,000.
And you said the four furlough days would be 50,000 each, right?
That's correct.
Okay. In the meantime, I want to go back to the bus monitors. All right, so I would like to, me personally, would like to take the bus monitors off the list.
I think so, too. I think that, I mean, there's, I think it's a requirement, I don't think it's...
I think it's a requirement, too.
If it's a requirement, definitely. And I, please check on that, we need to be very conscious of how we pay the people.
And I have, I have some... I want to know why E S E is being touched, anyway, because it's paid out of a different fund.
Well, I think that... That's, that's a question, I mean, I don't want to pay them.
I do, I have concerns about two of the leadership positions. One is being an E S E director. You cannot run a department like E S E without a leadership. There's got to be a director. They're over the E S E teachers, E S E aides, the children, the staffing, the I E Ps, everything, they have to monitor that. The transportation, you've got to have somebody over E S E. You've got to have an E S E director of some sort.
Excuse me.
No, it's all right.
Well, what surprised me with that position, I remember I said, position, that position is only 15% coming out of the general fund.
Five, five.
Oh, excuse me.
Five.
5% coming out of the general fund. In other words, we're not even paying for 95% of it. So that, I don't know, but again, these are Dr. Pickles' recommendations.
Ms. Gibson, Ms. Gibson, did you not call me and say you wanted that director position cut to a coordinator?
We will talk about, we're not...
No, ma'am.
I am...
Did you not, did you or did you not call me, I cannot cut a position. Did you, or did you not call me and say you wanted the director position cut to a coordinator?
Would you let me explain myself, please? I... I, in my mind, said all the administrators, we could cut them to a different level.
No ma'am, you specifically said the director position.
Well, it could be the director, it could be a coordinator, lower them down.
Well, I, I agree-
That's right. We'll, we'll just, we're going to come to that.
I, I agree with Ms. Williamson that it does need to be, it does need to be someone over that. We do need to look at it being probably a coordinator. And with the, with the, I feel personally that the only chief we should have in the district is finance officer and human resource should also be a coordinator.
Yes, I'll admit, I said it. We're in the business of saving money. I'm sorry. Yes, I'll say a lot of things about saving money.
If you will, if, if, Madam Chair, we're, we're working, I guess we kind of, we, we went to eliminating positions in an unofficial way. I thought that we were to explore all options and stay away from the list and use the list as a last option. So, if, I mean, if, if we have a deficit of $600,000 and we, when we met at the board retreat, we said we were going to, we were going to explore all options. I mean, we did, we mentioned and we spoke about, you know, positions and who, you know, as far as transfers and that kind of thing and what have you. But we, I think before we get to a list and start eliminate positions, let us, let us work closely with our finance department and explore all options.
Right.
And use, use positions as a last option.
Well, now, we're not eliminating the positions. We're taking them off the list.
Well, I mean, even taking, a list shouldn't even exist is what I'm saying, as of this point.
Let's, let's go to our next thing. One of the, one of the items that we had talked about or had been mentioned is just an across-the-board cut throughout the district of a 5% or maybe a 2.5%. Do you have the numbers on that, Mr. Copeland?
You're, you're going to, you're going to gain about $60,000 a percent cut for the remaining portion of the year to the general fund. So, about, like I said, $60,000 for every percent. And that, you know, 10%, $600,000.
So, so if we would do a 5% cut, that would be 300,000 roughly?
Okay.
Can I ask that you elaborate on that cut, please?
Do what now?
Can I ask that you elaborate on how you're, you're talking about that 5% cut?
5% across the board for everyone. Yes. Yes.
So, that's half, that's half. We, I mean, if, projection just kind of, that's half. And then, we just go down the line. I, I, I asked Mr. Copeland a couple of, maybe two meetings ago, and even in the board retreat, I said, if you can give us some recommendations as a finance officer. Some, you're crunching the numbers, you're looking at the numbers every day, you're looking at contracts, you're looking at all of these things on a daily basis. So, if, you know, if you can recommend a few items here and there, that, that can help us as well.
Well, can, can I elaborate on that for just a second? Again, Mr. Daniels, we do have, what I'm trying to do is look at the broken bones and then focus on the wrinkles. But, but you're, you're right. And, and I'll tell you a few things that we've worked together to accomplish. We, we got rid of our, our health insurance broker after I got time to dissect the plan we had been in for 10 years. And we've already received a quote that's $200,000 less on an annual basis than what we're in now.
So, that go, that can go towards?
Take, taken to the fact now, that, that's with, if, if we can do a short, our renewal's in October. So, if we can do a short year renewal, yes, we can recoup some of that during the remaining portion of the year. Mr. Goyet, our IT director and myself reviewed all of our copier contracts and printer contracts. And we non-renewed and went, were they, we're going with a different group and it's a savings of about $3,000 a month for the same services.
See, now we're talking. Now we're talking. That's what I'm, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
What, what we're do, what we're doing is, and I've preached, you know, in my department is, I think we, we've got a lot of good things in this district going on. My weak point is never working in a school district. My strength is working 23 years in the private sector where the numbers needed to add up. And we just need to, just like you said, we need to identify contracts, relationships, and, and follow up with people and make sure that we're getting a fair deal. And the other things we've done, let me, we've put into place a back-to-work program, Mr. Stahlnaker and myself and our risk management group for workers' comp claims. We've never had that at the district. I've worked with that in other businesses that I've worked in. And what it does is it puts people back to work in a role that they can do under their certain situation. But what it does do is it helps alleviate those few people you get through the years that may want to try to abuse the system, which will cause your workers' comp rates to go up. We've never had that. And so, it's, some of that's not going to be immediate return on our investment, but it's going to be helping the district long after I'm gone.
Right.
And so, but I'm, I'm scratching my head. I, I'm with you.
Because my biggest thing is, you know, it's January. And we, we're, we're a school district and I understand the fund balance and how important that is on a, on a state level as well as a district level. I, I get that. We need to be at a certain point or whatever, whatever. But it is January. And, and, and my thing is, we, we need to try to get as many folks as we possibly can to the, to the, what I would call the finish line. And that's the end of the fiscal year. And we can just let everybody know, hey, you know, January 1st, I mean, excuse me, July 1st, you know, it can be, it can be, it's going to be rough. It's going to be, but if we can try to get as many people to the finish line as possible, man, that, that will be, to me, that, that would be, that should be a top, our top priority, to try to get as many positions and people to the, to the June 30th as possible. And that's why, that's why I went there with the other options, the other options. Furlough, and we talked about moving, removing the county office to, the district office to the central school. That, that can generate us so much. We also talked about selling the annex building and that can, you know, that can add to it and help. I mean, there, there are many other options that we can explore before we even think about a list in January.
Well, well, and looking at the, if we look at the four days, that's 196 and then-
200,000.
That's two, or around 200 and then the 5% would be around 3. And then, if we look at the, the people within the district who are being transferred, at what savings that will be, I mean, I know it may not be from the job they're in, but they do have a job. If you, I mean, you have some people going from this position to another position and figuring those savings. We should be close-
And there's some retirements.
We have two people, one in January, one in February, leaving out on drop.
Mr. Daniels, and I haven't said this, but, you know, from day one I started this job, I've operated one person short in my department. And I've never said a word to anybody. I mean, I've had some contract help coming in, so it's not fair for me to just say I've been operating. It, it's not necessarily one full person down, but it's, I, I, we're trying to do everything we can.
And nothing against you and, and your job and your responsibilities, nothing personal.
No, I understand. Your questions are fair. Yeah.
Yeah, but what, what I'm saying is, you know, if, if we explore all options, the pain will be less, less severe is what I'm saying overall. There's a lot of pain, a lot of pain going on right now. Yes, ma'am.
If I may, I would like to remind all the board members, I was directed on the 15th to provide a list of positions. And I had input from several board members regarding positions. Actually, when I tried to call you, you did not return my call. All of you received a list of all of the positions. So-
Right, right. And, and we talked about-
I did provide a list.
Just for the record, we talked about positions and other options.
I was, I'm sorry, in the meeting, I was directed to provide a list for the meeting on the 24th. That was my direction. I did so.
Did, I mean, the, the list, 35 people, we, we-
We were also trying to get to a certain dollar figure.
Right, and that's why we, we mentioned the, the, moving the district office and, and selling the annex. Those two were the big chunk, that, that, those were the two big chunks of what we talked about. The, the, the positions, the transfer, that, all of those were low on the priority list.
And, and again, this list is something we can work toward in June because, I mean, the positions have been identified that we can cut. But I think what Mr. Daniels is saying and, and what I feel is that, at this time, if we could do the, the furlough days and across the board to give people a chance to at least make it to June before they're not, they don't have a job, we need to do that as a board. The other aspect, if we have people in the district who are, have been transferred, then, then they need to stay in those positions because that would be a savings for the district. I think we're trying to make this as harmless as we can to the people out there.
I think what we'd like to do is get a couple of different scenarios. And one would be exploring the different options, like you talked about, Mr. Daniels. As far as the annex goes, yes, I've, I've spoken to Mr. Reeves about it. And you mentioned that we'd have to have an educational plant survey done by the DOE.
For, for a sale, before you can sell it.
Okay. Well, how, how do you get the ball rolling on that?
You request that from the DOE.
What's the procedure? Right.
You, you have to make a request to DOE.
Okay.
Mr. Gin probably would be the one.
Mr. Gin? All right, well, then, in the meantime, we have to think about vacating the building. I mean, because it's, I don't know how the board feels about it. Well, I think Mr. Daniels spoke about it. I think that's something that we, that can generate some well-needed funds. So, I would like to have that started. And again, the credit union's in there, the ESE department, I believe, is in there. There's room at Central. We've got vacant classrooms that can be the offices. And we need the money. We don't have the room, we don't have, we can't afford luxuries, basically. And that's a luxury. How do you feel about that?
I agree. I agree. Especially if we're going to try to sell it. We need to get the plant survey done and get on the ball.
And we're not giving it away for a dollar. Uh-uh. I don't, you know, it's going to have to be put up, make a beautiful office. And Ms. Bell, how do you feel about that?
We, if that's what we had discussed in the retreat, that we was going to try to sell the annex.
And Mr. Alfred?
Yes, ma'am. We need to try to-
And Mr. Daniels?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so we will, if you will direct Mr. Gin to start the process for that. And what about vacating the building? Any ideas from the board?
Well, we, we do need to get a plan of, of what we're going to do, like where they're going to go. Because if someone comes up and says, I want it, and next month, and they have the cash, I mean, Dr. Duley-
What if we have?
Wrote a check for the hospital and, and a day and brought us the check over, so-
And that's a good possibility. If they've got the money, they-
Someone could, I mean-
And also, if, if there's room at Central School and that's where they're going to move, move, might as well go ahead and do it because we'd save on the utility between now and the time we sell it.
Okay. Well, I'm going to throw a date out and say February 15th. That would give them a couple of weeks to find a space, talk to Mrs. Dixon, and, you know, they can move out there. The credit union, possibly some room at the county office, that they could move into the county office. And this will be, now, we don't know if it's going to be sold in a month or six months. But, so we really can't depend on the money because it may also not be sold for, you know, but at least we are, that's an option for us. So, that's something that we will definitely want to happen. How does the board feel about the February 15th date?
That's fair. I mean, that's a fair time.
I think that's fair. That's right. All right, so that's, that's one of our options right there.
What about getting rid of those old buses that's behind the transportation and other ground?
Can they be sold, do you think?
I would think so.
We, can I address that?
Yeah, go ahead.
We have had an auction group come in and I can't tell you the, you the exact number, but we have sold several or either junked the ones that Mr. Johnson said were not worth messing with. They don't bring a lot of money, but it takes it off of our insurance rolls and, and it makes the place look better. But there are, but there are some more. And Mr. Killingsworth has provided a list of all other rolling stock we have within the district. I'm talking about just vehicles and things. And we're looking at doing the same thing with those, the ones that aren't cost-effective to keep and the ones we don't need. And that'll get us a little bit of cash and it'll get it off of our insurance. So, that's, that's in progress and has been for a little bit.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. Getting us back on track, I'd like us to, again, consider two scenarios. Let me throw this out to the board. One scenario would involve various cuts that we just talked about. It wouldn't involve any, any positions right now. And I'd like to explore those possibilities. But remember, selling the annex, we cannot depend on that money.
We shouldn't depend on it.
Don't, don't depend on that. If I put my house up for sale today, there's no guarantee I'm going to sell it in a year, two, three, or- in other words, we don't want to do, no. So, that, that's, we'll, let's think of options right now to, that wouldn't affect the positions. And, and then, Mr. Copeland, if you could come up with some numbers, maybe by, you know, Thursday, let's say. And then, we'll explore options that involve positions, which is going back to our recommendations.
With, with that, Mr. Copeland, if you could include the individuals who have been transferred that are still in the district, maybe from the, I think we've had some teachers to transfer and then maybe an administrator that transferred to a teacher. I mean, that's still having a job within the district. As, within that, within that group. And I would think that would be close to the 600,000 mark, possibly. One, one thing that I've thought about, and I don't know how the other board members feel about it, I just want to throw it out. And looking at Greenville with their lead teacher, after a thought with it, just in today's time and how children bring a lot more to the table maybe than they did 10, 20 years ago, I, I do think we're probably going to need a teacher there. I, I don't, I'm, excuse, excuse me, a principal there. But I, I was thinking, and I don't know how the other board members feel, concerning the possibility of maybe having a teacher on special assignment and they be on a teacher salary scale, much like our AP here at the high school, who's on a teacher on special assignment, where, where they could be out of the classroom. I, I just don't know logistically how that's going to be able to be done with, in today's time with parents and students, how, how a teacher that's in the classroom full-time is going to be able to be an administrator. And in today's time, if you were to have a lockdown or, or heaven forbid, an active shooter or something, I mean, that teacher's going to have to be tending to her kids, not looking after the school. So, I, I think for that school being below the numbers, hopefully that would be where it would help them stay within the budget to do a teacher on special assignment on a teacher salary scale. The other thing that I had thought about is possibly keeping the fifth grade there and going up to the sixth grade to add more students where it would maybe add some more FTE there where it maybe would even out in the support of it.
That's, I, I like that idea, Mr. Alfred. I hadn't thought about that. But you're right, it would generate the funds. Not only that, when I think about Greenville, I mean, just speaking geographically, you know, if they didn't have a person in charge and there was a problem, I mean, it's easy to say, we'll send a principal over there. Well, over there is what?
Over there.
Over there. You know, I mean, so you really, but now, again, we've streamlined Greenville. I'm all in favor of what we've done and I know we have the support over there.
But we've got to operate within our budget.
We've got to operate within our budget and a, a teacher on assignment is about half the price of the, and that's what we're talking about, dollars and cents.
It would be, it would be a teacher at, they would be getting teacher's salary. But again, I- It would be a teacher at...they would be getting teacher's salary, but again, I feel that that's probably the best scenario we can do as a board, rather than having a lead teacher where they're in the classroom. I just don't know...
Are we referring to the next school year, or you mean immediately?
I mean, I would say now to try to get it, to try to get them within where they're at.
We've got to be realistic. I mean, we've got to...
No, we are realistic. And what I'm...I guess what I'm saying is, if we basically, we've already, or we're close to the six hundred as far as the recommendations or whatever, it's January. I think we can't forget that it is January. We're interrupting those classes, we're...they've moved from one wing to another, so those teachers, those kids are...
But no, the principal would stay there.
Yeah, that still would be...
I mean, the principal would say, but her, instead of like, if we were to decide to cut chiefs or directors down to coordinators, they would still be there, but it would just be a change in their salary. But they would still be in the role as principal of that school. We wouldn't be getting a new person. It would still be them. I mean, I...what the lead teacher would be, you have one of those teachers, if we were to do that next year, one of those teachers would have to be assuming the role as administrator and teacher. And I just don't know with the way, with children's behaviors today and...I mean, I just think we're setting the people up for failure if we do that.
Yeah, I would go even a step further to say, I believe it would be a security risk.
Right. I do, too.
Not having a...
But no, I was...I mean, I was meaning that the person is there to try to get that school within its operating, within its budget, which I think that we're probably close to doing that. I mean, it would be interesting to see the numbers, like, once we did that, where we were at with that.
Well, that was going...that's going back to the list, Mr. Alfred, because it was...one of the things was to eliminate the principal, which is basically what we're saying, eliminate the principal, but then we would be having the teacher on assignment...
Teacher on special assignment.
Basically replace that person. And I want to say something about Greenville. Now, this is not my district, by the way. District two does go into Greenville, which it wouldn't make any difference, but I'm there regularly. I've, for the last, well, three years, let's say, I've been going over there. And they have had to endure some changes, and guess what? They did it with a smile on their face. And I thought, well, that was commendable. They realized we've got some issues, but they packed up. I didn't hear anyone complaining about it. They're in the one wing. The gym is basically, they're not using the air or the heat in the gym. I mean, so things are...and we hope that, like we said, we're not in the business of closing down A and B schools. So, okay, so we've got...we addressed that. Now, let me get this straightened out. Let's get back on...we said we were going to have two scenarios. One involved not touching any positions. Mr. Copeland, are you good with that? Now, let me ask you this, though. We mentioned the two percent. Now, what does that involve? I mean, does that involve a vote or a union or, I mean, didn't you mention that, Mr. Alfred?
Well, no, five percent.
Okay, five percent. Okay, five percent.
I mean, the...
Is that something that we can say, we're going to all take five percent?
Certainly for the positions in the bargaining unit, that's going to have to be negotiated with the union. Hopefully, that could be done pretty quickly.
Okay. And then also on the table, on that scenario, was the furlough days. And how does that, can you give us...
The same way. You'd have to negotiate that.
Same way, okay.
And I think, as was said earlier by the superintendent, for that to generate the savings that you need, those are going to have to be furlough days that would not be paid back.
Right.
If they're to be paid back, then you've got to...you show a liability at the same time you show a savings and it doesn't actually affect the percentage.
And it sounds, according to the, what Ms. Kinsey said, that they were receptive to the idea.
Is there any way that we may could possibly, if we have some extra hours built in to maybe do a half-day or maybe a couple of half-days in there to give the teachers and staff, I mean, the time off to like maybe make up for the furloughs if we're not paying it back? I mean, would that be a possibility, Mr. Reeves?
I'm not real sure I'm following you.
If, with, in our overall, like, time in that we're in school, if we have extra time built in that we possibly could do a couple early release days from now to the end of the school extra, where, for the employees, for giving up the time, giving up the...
I think I see what you're saying. So take some of the days that were otherwise going to be full days, turn them into half-days, and you're basically giving them extra time off.
Right. And so they're not, I mean, so they're, maybe to make up a little bit for the time that we're taking.
I think you can look at that. And obviously, you've got state requirements on how long children have to be in school and all that, but that's certainly something you can look at.
I mean, we should have some extra hours, I would think.
We have a total of two days that we can use and that's it. We've already looked at the calendar.
So, I mean, even if we could do one day, that's better than no day for them.
Well, but remember now, you're going to use some of those days with furlough.
Oh.
See what I'm saying? So whatever extra days you have, I mean, do we even have four extra days in the calendar?
We have two, and then we can do postponing days.
Okay.
Okay. So I guess that's no...
But the half-days, and we need to check with DOE now, I'm not saying this for certain, but half-days, I don't believe necessarily count against those days. So again, it's just, it's something we can look at.
Yeah, I mean, I would like for us to look at it, and if possibly we could do it, is this a way to...
Right.
Give it to the employees, something for them.
Sure.
And I cannot speak for the board, like I said, furlough days, five percent. We are...I'm all for it. It'll affect my salary, too. So please don't applaud. I mean, I'm not looking for any, you know, but I'm just saying, we are supporting the employees. Okay, now, let's get back to what we were talking about. We have the two scenarios now. One doesn't involve positions, and the other one will involve positions. Not people, positions. All right. Do we have any ideas? Let's go back to our list. We talked about the bus monitors. Mr. Copeland's going to check on how we can pay the bus monitors, possibly out of ESE. We talked about the principal at Greenville, making that the teacher on assignment. The transportation, now, I'm going to throw this out. That's a job. I mean, you have all the bus drivers, you've got the buses, you've got the bus routes, you've got...we've heard about...I know, and by the way, I had been down the back steps. I've even taken cupcakes there, just so you, you know, you don't see me, but I'm around. I mean, no problem. But in other words, that is, it's a job. And it was going to be shared with another position. We've got to be careful with sharing positions because you overload them and then everything seems to...it's bewildering, I think. So how does the board, what is the board's pleasure on this?
I feel that probably this is a position we do need in that it affects so many people. And although his salary does come from the general fund, in this report that Ms. Fulmer gave us, he's driving all these extra routes, that that's someone's paycheck. I mean, he's...I mean, his salary may be coming from the general fund, but if we had to hire all the people that he's driving these routes for...
That's a good way of looking at it.
It is saving us money.
That's a good way of looking at it.
I mean, it's probably cutting his salary maybe in half, so I...
Why are we discussing the cuts if we already came up with a plan to cut the five percent?
We've got to have two plans.
We have two scenarios going on here.
If the union doesn't agree with the first one, we've got to have another one.
One scenario is not cutting positions. That's the one that we talked about with the annex and the furlough days and the five percent. That's one scenario. The other scenario is going to be the positions. We're talking about positions right now. See, we have to, we want to explore a couple of possibilities. And the bottom line is, like we said, the enrollment is down. When the enrollment goes down, you don't need as many positions as you've had in the past.
I mean, I personally hope we can go with the first scenario.
I do, too.
But in reality, we have to be, we have to be realistic that this may not pass with the union, and we need another plan and not be back at square one.
That's why I suggested doing the scenarios, because if one doesn't work, another one may work.
I've got a question for Mr. Walter. Are we looking to be in the same predicament next year?
If we don't make cuts, the cuts we're talking about with the furloughs and the projected decrease in payroll, yes, we will be in the same issue next year considering the FTE stays flat, which we will project that. And we will actually get, in a worst-case scenario, if we, our compensation and staffing stays the same and we hit a step increase. So I think we're making smart moves to get through to the end of the year. I just think we're going to have to make the hard decisions, or this is going to be every-year patch to limp along until our fund balance goes to nothing.
And I, Mr. Copeland, I think we owe it to the taxpayers. You know, I mean, we're watching the money, and I think probably this should have been done years ago. And I know how stuff, the ball, the snowball keeps rolling, and I realize how things operate. And it wasn't, we didn't have the bad times, I'm sure, during those years. But it's, we've come to the point where we do have to make the decisions, and that's why we have this scenario going on right now.
Where, I mean, I think the plan that we have is a great plan to guide in July or June that we're going to have to make these cuts.
That's right.
My thing is this. If we went through scenario number one, and we've already given Mr. Copeland the directive to look, explore those options, and, you know, we talked about trying to alleviate the pain that the folks who are on the list are, you know, have endured over the last week or so with the letters and all of the extra. If we go through scenario number two, and we go through, "Well, we don't need this position," or "We need this position," or just, it's not official, but "We don't need you, we don't need this position," or whatever, that's going to probably do more damage than not even exploring it in the first place. So my point is, why not just let Mr. Copeland and the other players do what they can do with option number one? And if we need to cross that bridge, we cross it.
Mr. Daniels, may I address that, please? Our five hundred thousand is only going to get us to three percent. We will notify the commissioner, and he will pretty much reject this plan. And based on statute, he has the right then to go ahead and bring a third-party oversight committee in. We have to have a long-term, sustainable plan. Just getting us through the end of the year is not going to work.
Right, but I want to do it the right way.
Mr. Daniels, may I finish?
Sure.
We have to decide something for now and next year because we can't just put the Band-Aid on, as Pastor Williams has said. We can't just address this now. This is going to be a continual problem.
I under...
I need you all to understand, three percent, I have already been questioned, three percent, three and a half percent, that's not enough. I have been told you better get your fund balance up higher than that.
All right, Mr. Daniels, would it make it more, bring some clarity, if we had Dr. Pickles explain how she came up with the positions? Maybe that would be, in other words, she had some rhyme and rhythm, rhyme and reason?
Reason.
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 Reason, rhyme and reason, okay. She has, in other words, would you be able to do that, Dr. Pickles? How you came up with these, you know, I mean...
I was directed by this board to ask for input from the principals. I started with Ms. Dixon. Ms. Dixon has been sitting in the school board meeting. She has heard Mr. Alfred say, "Central School has too many clerical positions."
And again, I'm not saying they do not need to be cut.
May I finish?
Yes, ma'am, you may. Yes, ma'am.
She identified certain people positions. I didn't care who the people were. I have to follow the ratified collective bargaining agreement and go by and put those positions in there. So she identified some clerks and certain secretaries. I even looked at our office, at the district office, to see which clerical positions, because if I'm going to ask a school to make cuts, it's only fair that I make cuts there. So it was like I went to all the different staff, "Can you make a cut?" Some of them only supervised one person. I was sitting there asking, "Who can you cut?" So then went right down the contract language, and it does say, "The last person hired," we go by the seniority. So we've had to sit, Mr. Stollnacker and I, and Mr. Copeland, we held up in the boardroom for two days, because if you'll recall, this was the fifteenth, the nineteenth and nineteenth, and I had to have this list and prepared for the twenty-fourth. We have to notify the union. They have to all be notified. So we were having to identify. Our problem is calculating the savings for five months. So it's a matter of you are picking the people with the lowest salaries because they have only been here for a few months or a year. So it's going across the board, from administrators down. It is looking at the position title, not the people holding the positions. It's actually taking input from those that have called me and seeing, "Who can we divide this job duties up with? Could we divide something up with? If it was a grant-funded position, could somebody assume part of those duties?" I will use the coordinator of adult ed and CTE. I can assign adult ed to somebody and CTE to somebody. And that grant-funded position, adult ed can follow to somebody, CTE could follow to somebody. It's looking at the positions and what could be decided. As far as the non-instructional, it's taking the input. I've spoke to several. Some said they could not do away with anybody. In the corporate world, usually when you're told that, that person is then cut. Everybody can do away and tighten their belt. That's how we started coming up. And yes, Ms. Gibson, I put Ms. Newman on there because you said the director needed to...
I'm not concerned with the name. I'm only concerned with the position.
Well, we only have one director in here.
I'm not talking about a name. I'm sorry. We're talking about positions.
Well, I, and moving on and getting back on track, I do think that probably this list needs to be the list, probably in that these people are notified that come the end of the fiscal year, they will not have a job. But based upon this list, I mean, we're making it up until June, they'll have a check. I mean, I think that's fair and we're giving, because we do have, I hear what Dr. Pickles is saying, we do have to have a plan where we can make these cuts. Until we cut about thirty people, our fund balance is not going to come up.
I don't feel, now, I'm the last one to say you don't have a job. Excuse me. But I don't feel comfortable relying on, let's say, scenario one. That doesn't make me feel very comfortable right now.
We, I mean, again, if it doesn't pass, then we just will have to come back before, but in all reality, I mean, this is just me speaking, this, these cuts that have been placed before us, I mean, these are the positions, like, you do have a lot of positions that are paid out of the general fund, and that would be the biggest savings to us. I question some of them that are paid out of, like, Title I for a parapro. I mean, that's coming out of Title I or out of IDEA for the parapro. How is that saving out of the general fund? But for the most part, they are all, are all out of the general fund, and I do think that this probably should remain as the letter that people are given right now that come the end of the fiscal year, that their appointments will no longer, that it will end.
Mr. Alfred, may I ask which pair you were referring to?
Um...
If it's a pair, we have to follow the contract language, and it does not matter where they're funded from. Unless you would like the union to file a ULP.
No, again, I was...
It does not matter their funding source.
Well, thank you. I mean, that's all I needed to know. I mean, again, I was, again, most of these are from the general fund, but there are some from Title I and IDEA.
The reason they are listed is it's, we followed the contract language.
Well, again, and we should follow the contract, but again, that's... But again, that's, that's what I'm saying concerning, that I feel that, that this needs to be our, our guide to what's gonna happen at the end of the fiscal year, that, that these people no longer will have.
Right. I, I understand what, let me make sure I understand what you're saying, Mr. Gal, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Alfred. In other words, we, we have our, let's call it scenario one, that doesn't affect the positions.
Everyone keeps their job.
Everyone keeps their job until the end of the year. Okay. Now, what's gonna happen? Mr. Copeland's gonna have to run the numbers. And hopefully, he can get them to us by Thursday, let's say. We'll schedule another meeting. I was thinking of Friday, the meeting. Now, in my mind, and I don't know if the rest of you agree, I still am going back to the list. I mean, I don't wanna be, it's, in other words, I'd rather not use it now, believe me.
Right.
But something tells me, when you're dealing with this kind of money, we're banking on some things that we don't know if they're gonna come to fruition.
Right, I'm-
That's what scares me.
Well, what's-
And, and believe me, I'm gonna say this, and I know everyone's, I, this is heartbreaking to me, when you have to say to someone, or, I won't even say someone, when you eliminate a position, because you know that position is a live person. And that, that bothers me. So, I'm, I'm the la, and believe me, I, I, I can't stress that enough. And I, I know, okay, we're gonna just talk about the positions. So, I, I didn't, I thought, you know, we've got, we've made a couple of comments about the positions. And if we could just, and I, it's up to the, it's the pleasure of the board, again, this is just throwing out the suggestion, if we kind of work a little bit on the list, just in case we have to call back in.
Well, I would think if, I would think if the union did not accept Plan One, we would have to go to the list. Because we, we do not have another list.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you what I was, and I've talked to Mr. Reeves about this, that we'll schedule a meeting, if everyone is available, on Friday, February 1st, 6 o'clock at the, right back here, same place. And we'll, Mr. Copeland will have given us the information that we need to use. And decisions are going to have to be made. We've made some decisions already here tonight. And we're trying to, and I know, it's tough in the middle of the year. You know, I mean, there's something about school. School goes from August to, you know, the end of the year. And it's, it's just kind of always been that way. And I know it, it's, it's caused a disruption. But let me ask the pleasure of the board, I mean, give me your thoughts, because we are working together on this.
I would like to know what else could we do instead of firing people completely? What else could we do? What would be another way that we could conserve jobs and stay within our budget, not only this year, but next year also?
We, a, a, again, we would need to utilize seats in facilities. We, we need to either fill them up or shrink them down to where the remaining are full. We're paying overhead on empty seats in schools. And the, the main portion of those seats are the high school and the central school, which, the central school has 800 vacant seats, and the high school is, roughly has probably 300 to 400 empty. So, the, if you look at your, your model, and outside of compensation, that would be the next area that any businessman would point out and say you've got to address. And to be feasible going forward for a long-term plan. You think about it, we had the additional FTE to fill the schools up, we'd be rolling with what we have. But we don't, and it doesn't look like we ever will. So, we need to see around the corner with that. And that's another area. A lot of the smaller things can be addressed, but you're, and, and need to be addressed, but you're not gonna be able to whack enough off that way to make a sustainable model. It will not work. You can pick it apart and, uh, uh, change, copy our contracts and do this and that. Smart moves, but you, you, you're just, you're-
Based, based upon-
Ms. Bell, if I may refer back to the fiscal study that Mr. Hamilton did for us. The district operates a number of small schools. The smallest of schools is Greenville. It is recommended that the district examine the opportunity to close Greenville Elementary and consolidate the schools into other district schools. There are seats available in the mini classrooms, the 3,500 seats that we have and operate.
I, I don't want nobody to lose their jobs. I, I just can't see nobody losing their jobs. And we, even if we carry it out to June and then tell these people they don't have a job, it's, it, round here in this area, there ain't very many jobs here.
But we're over-sav.
But I, I mean, we are, we are, we have identified that with the staff allocation that we are over-staffed. That, that is true. But it was nothing like this list here. And then they said this list might, might not be enough, they might be another cut.
People, in, in all reality, people, a lot of people should have never gotten jobs they've gotten, because if we would have been following, I mean, that's-
But the truth of the matter, we did give them jobs, and now you're gonna try to take them away.
Well, well, again, if, if we're gonna operate within our budget, you can't-
But there's other things and other options-
They're not sure the budget, though.
That we could do-
What, what are they? What are they?
I mean, I don't know. That's what we're discussing now.
Well, again, again.
That's what we're discussing now. But are, are you telling me it is okay to take away these people's jobs?
I, I'm saying we have to operate within our budget, or we're gonna be bankrupt.
Exactly. You just answered my question.
We're gonna be bankrupt.
Bart, on the 22nd of December, we were. I mean, we were, we were above the, the, the fund balance, and, and the bottom fell out from there. And nobody can explain the 162.
So, where are the, like we said, we don't know where the 100, as well-
They're up on the screen.
They came up.
The bottom line is, they're not here.
And I do wanna make it to June. I do wanna make it to June, but I'm also looking at to next year. I don't want people to lose their jobs. There's people that have been here on this list for many, many years, like Ivan Johnson. I, I, there's several, quite a few people here that have been here quite a few years. For us to say, okay, we're gonna cut these people in June, and there might be another option, I just can't see it.
All right, Ms. Bell, we understand what you're saying. The bottom line is, and, and I will quote Dr. Pickles, we're not an employment agency, and it's true. I mean, we, we, my heartache for-
But I'm thinking about the children. This is gonna, I can only think-
I know, we're, we're thinking about the children, but we've got to sustain the school system.
One-
That's the bottom line. I, I know, it's-
One-
Excuse me.
One, one aspect that we could look at to, to fill up seats at the high school is, we're talking about moving, or keeping, the 5th graders to 6th grade at Greenville. Possibly, possibly if we could do the 7th and 8th grade to the high school. And, and that would, that would help a lot with teachers in, in your higher level, like your math classes and your science, where they're all under one roof, and your ag class. And then have K through 6 at Central on one wing and shut down the other wing, and that would save-
Mr. Alfred, Mr. Alfred, I approached DOE about that when I was elected. And I approached them about keeping the 6th grade at the outlined schools. I actually even talked to them about possibly having 8th grade go to the high school. Anything to help change our configuration. And because of our persistently low-performing school, I was told I had all very valid reasons when I met with the former chancellor. And that's when I was told he could find no argument, and that was when I was told I needed to close Greenville.
Well-
Right, that was the-
Just a moment. Then I received a phone call later that told me that Madison County Central School was under capacity. I needed to close all three schools. I am telling you, they would not do it. I've already tried.
I think you said that was two years ago, right? Three? No, two years ago.
Right. That was the previous administration. I would encourage you to fight for our students with this administration.
When I, when I first got on board, that was one of my questions, could we pull the kids back to Greenville and let the school goes up, go up to 7th grade? Me and Ms. Pickles talked about it. And exactly what she said is what she told me, that we cannot, we cannot do it. It's, it's not us, it's, it's the, it's the state. It's not, it's not us.
I'd like to stop for a minute and maybe let Mr. Reeves give us your take on this, if you will, the scenarios.
Okay, thank you.
Let's hear your opinion.
The, the, the one thing I would point out, and I, and I, I wanna kind of try to refocus y'all. You're talking about moving grades to outline, either outline in or in out. You're not gonna move grades in the middle of the year. Those are savings that are gonna occur next year. You've got a, according to Mr. Copeland, I believe, he said $600,000, you gotta make up by June 30. So, I, I think, and, and I know, maybe my job on line next for this, but I, I think you need to really focus this meeting on getting to June 30. And then, once that is done, you need to start having other meetings on next year and those systemic changes that you may or may not make. But they, they all need to be looked at, and they need to be looked at along with the, the communities and get, and, and these same types of meetings. But I, I really encourage you to separate those two into cuts you need to make to make, to, to have savings prior to June 30 to offset the FTE losses, and then cuts you need to make beginning July 1.
Okay. Well, how do you feel about, now, in other words, I, my idea was the two scenarios, which we talked about before.
I, I think when you're talking about, you're, you wanna look at the pay cuts and the furlough days and all of that, that's a, yes, absolutely, look at that. You need to build in some time to negotiate with the union, because obviously, those are very big issues to their members, and they need time to talk to them and, and all of that. I, I would, hopefully, if you wanna have a meeting on Friday, hopefully, you could get those numbers. I, I don't know if Mr. Copeland can give us an idea on when he can get those numbers. You get those numbers, hopefully, you know, late tomorrow, get them emailed out to everybody, and then you'd have Thursday and Friday day to talk to the union about, you know, whether or not they're interested in those, in those alternatives. I do think if, if you don't, certainly, the board has the authority, and you can say, well, we wanna just look at scenario one right now, and then on, if we can't work it out with the union, we'll go back and look at scenario, we'll figure out another scenario on cutting positions. You certainly have that authority. But please remember that every day you delay making whatever cuts you ultimately make, you're decreasing the savings that you will make by June 30. So, if you ultimately are going to have to make cuts, I'm not saying make cuts. If, though, you ultimately have to, you wanna go ahead and make those cuts. And so that you can make fewer cuts. You see, if you, if you negotiate for several weeks, and then you finally, nothing else works, and you have to make cuts, now you're gonna have to cut more positions to make the right savings.
More money.
So, I don't think a day or two is necessarily gonna matter all that much. If you need a few more days, absolutely, take it. But just, I would encourage you to, to think along those lines. So, it, you know, it may be that what you want to do to be more efficient is to kind of outline a couple of different scenarios, let Mr. Copeland run the numbers, bring them back, and that way, you'd have everything before you on Friday. And, and, and also importantly, the public could have all of that before it, where they can come in and tell you what they think, and then you all can make your, your decision. That, that would be my recommendation to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. I like the idea of having a couple of different scenarios. I mean, in other words, let's make a decision. It, it's not an easy decision. Like I said, we don't wanna cut positions, but we're in the position that we have to make a decisions. We have to make decisions. Now, we have, we, Mr. Copeland is aware of what, but as far as getting with the union, I don't know how that happens, or we don't, we don't get involved with that. But that's gonna have to happen. All right, now, but then again, I have to have the consensus of the board. I mean, if you'll tell me how you feel, we have addressed the recommendations from Dr. Pickles. We've addressed some of the recommendations from Dr. Pickles. We mentioned the bus monitors. We mentioned the principal at Greenville. Transportation, that's-
And ESC coordinator.
ESC coordinator. Those right now are basically off the list. Which, off the list means they weren't going to be eliminated. All right? Does anyone else have any ideas about the recommendations?
Well, I, I still keep going back to the list we have. I mean, if, if, if that's, if Plan One does not work out, then-
Then, then we would-
Then, then this, I mean, and I hope it, I hope it does, but-
I, I don't think the list was made frivolously. I mean, it sounds like Dr. Pickles did, it, it take, you know, talked to the administrators, the principals at the school. I mean, in other words, she didn't come up, you know, there's, there's a reason for this. And basically, the reason is overstaffed. And so, I, let me review again. We have decided, the transportation supervisor would be taken off the list. The bus monitors would be taken off the list. The administrator of ESC, which is, remember, it's only paid 15% out of the general fund.
Five, five.
Excuse me, five. I have, I don't know why I wrote 15. Five. And then, of course, we said the principal would be eliminated, but we would like a teacher on assignment for Greenville. All right, now, I wanna think back to, and you, board members can help me, didn't we have a lady come from Career Source within the past year and talk to us about, she said we could do hiring, we could do, you know, we'll do that for you at no charge?
I think we have.
Do you remember that? I'm not sure if it was Career Source or where the lady came. Do you remember, Mr. Reeves, the lady that came, that gave us a presentation? It's been a while now.
I, I remember the presentation. I don't remember the extent of those services they were offering.
Her services were that it wouldn't cost any money. I got that much out of her. And, you know, just basically, and, and, and I, I mean, our human resource is a very high-paid position out of general fund. I know that. And that's, and I, I look at the general fund, you know, basically, there's, there's money, right? That's, that's, another is the safety position. That's, and, and interrupt me, just give me your feedback, you know, 50% of it's paid out of a grant. 50% out of the general fund.
Well, I'll just save you some time. I, I'm with Plan A, and if Plan A doesn't work, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. So, I mean, y'all can go ahead. I'm just one person. I'm, I'm one person, and so, I'm just letting you know openly where I stand on all of them at this point.
That's how I feel, too. I feel like we could discuss who we go cut next, on Friday, if Plan A does not work.
Well, let me ask the pleasure of the board. We could meet on Friday. Mr. Copeland will supply his information. Decisions will be made on Friday. We'll have to come to a decision. We don't wanna take any more time, because time means money. How does the board feel about meeting?
And, and even if the, the few options we gave Mr. Copeland didn't work out, there's still more. There's still more.
Well, if, if there's more, let's hear them.
There are more.
We need to-
We need to hear them.
There are more.
Well, if you would give us, and I'm not trying to be, but in other words, Mr. Copeland's gonna be crunching the numbers between now and then, so-
And if, if, would Friday be, be sufficient enough time for you, man? Because I mean, there, there are more options.
May I clarify something for Mr. Copeland? What date does he need to be, work with as far as the 5% cut across the board for staff?
When would it start, the 5%?
Yes.
Well-
That's what he's gonna need.
Let me ask you, Mr. Copeland, since you're the, in the payroll and all that.
We, we can, we can push and pull on that area and change the days, but we can make a, just come back to me, and I'd say, if today is the end of January, maybe February the 15th, or-
If I can, even the union, I don't believe, can negotiate away salary for time that's already been worked.
Right.
So, what you'd have to do is, you, you, the 5% would have to be effective the next payroll for the pay period that has not been worked. So, if, if we're paying from the 15th to the, if our pay period is the 15th to the 14th, then it would be the, whatever, that would be the, the payroll that's paid out at the beginning of March would be the first one.
Okay. I'll, I'll check and see when our, our next pay cutoff is, because it is kind of spastic during the months, and I understand where you're coming from there, and we can base our projections on that.
And, and the other thing, I think with the, what the numbers you gave for four furlough days was 196,000. And what we're now talking about, I think what the superintendent said was two school days and two planning days. So, I don't know if that changes that 196,000 at all. Obviously, the planning days, you're not saving on buses, you're not saving on food services, all that kind of stuff.
All right, so, we'll, if it's the pleasure of the board, we'll meet Friday, February 1st at 6 o'clock at the high school again. Any comments?
We just, I mean, again, we need to have, we need to, you need to come with plans, if you have extra plans, because if Plan One doesn't go through, then we're gonna have have to have something to...
Well, I thought we'd kind of expedite things by getting the scenario, but that's, that's all right, if we don't want to, you know, but, but Friday, we will have to make some decisions based on Mr. Copeland's numbers.
Well, and, and Madam Chair, I think, and Mr. Copeland would have to get the numbers and talk to the union, and we have to have their position on those...
Right.
On that scenario, if, if it can be done that quickly.
Okay. I, I still, I, like I've already explained to you, I don't need to explain to you again. I, I was thinking if we could work on this, but evidently it's not going to happen right now, that we could get some numbers on that second scenario, but that's the board, it's not the pleasure of the board.
Well, we, we can, we can still get some hypotheticals, and keep in mind, too, that we're trying to finish up our audit. We've got auditors in the office full-time, and what we're working off of is our unaudited beginning fund balance at July one of this year. So, any audit adjustments, we could have them in our direction, we could have them in the other direction. But we don't have the, we're not fortunate to have that done, so we, we're, we're a twenty-five-million-dollar organization between our general fund and our federal programs. And let me say, just tell you this, I, I and we project the best we can, but I can promise you with my projections, they're going to be different than the actual numbers. But we want that difference to be as small as it can be, and I will provide you my best, or our best, uh, uh, projections to, to get the, the scenarios that y'all need.
Right. Well, I want to feel comfortable with it. I want, I don't like living by, in other words, are we going to have enough money to pay our bills? That's, I don't like that in my personal life. I don't want to subject the school system to it either. So, any further comments with, from the board? Oh, yes.
Ms. Gibson, I just went and spoke to Ms. Kinsey. The union will not be available for negotiations at all this week. She has other commitments.
All right. That means it's...
We can put them together, assuming it goes or not goes, and, and, and look at it that way, so we're not scrambling to do it.
Well, I don't know if we should schedule a meeting for Friday night, then, since we don't have the...
Yeah, next week.
We won't have the exact numbers.
Next week.
You know, in other words, we want, it's going to be decision time. So, if we don't have all the facts, there's no sense coming together Friday. We're, we're going to have a workshop on Monday, our regularly, regularly scheduled, I don't know if that could, it could happen between now and Monday.
The five percent won't take effect until March, right? The payroll in March, right?
If it goes through, it would be the cutoff from the union. We'll have a pay cutoff on this month, but I read you say, we would determine that date, and if it takes effect then for...
Because I was, I'm listening to Mr. Reeves, when he said that for every day, you know, it might be another person cut. I'm, I'm...
Well, it wouldn't be every day, but when, when you do look at compensation cuts moving forward, that's why you can't wait for them, because if you wait three weeks before you're out of money, cutting all the people in the world will have no difference.
But if we schedule a meeting for next week, we should still be somewhat okay?
Yeah, we're not, we're, we're, we're not to a point that it, it's going to make a huge difference at this point. We just need to do something before we keep kicking the can down there.
Okay.
But if we meet Friday, and the union hasn't had time to meet, then we can't, we won't know anything.
I just want to make sure, okay, that another person will be on the chopping block.
Well, it is timely, there's no doubt about that. But now, I wouldn't suggest meeting Friday, then. Uh, Monday, we will have our regularly scheduled meeting at the county office, the agenda review. We could...
Can I make a suggestion? If, if we can go ahead and get the numbers, the way we were talking about, and get those emailed out to everybody, you've got a meeting on Monday. At Monday, the union will have had the numbers, they can probably give us a timeframe of when they can meet, and so on Monday, you could set your next meeting to make a decision, either set it for, you know, Wednesday or Thursday, or whatever y'all want to do.
Sounds good. So, we'll, we'll meet again on Monday, and we'll make a decision on Monday as to when to meet next. Any comments?
No, I mean, I, again, we just need to...
Yeah.
We just need to have, be thinking of our Plan B, and, and be thinking that although, although these people on this list were not cut at this point, it's, it's a high probability they're going to have to be in, at the end of the year, for us to be able to...
Or some of them.
Right.
Or, yeah.
I think we agree with that, Mr. Alfred. You know, I mean, we, we know it's got to be done.
I mean, there's no way that we can keep, keep...
And we're not afraid to make the decision. It's just going to, it's just a matter of...
Unless we get a lot of students move in, or a lot of money from somewhere.
And in the meantime, once we get this finalized, then we're going to work toward our other, other improvements for the school system, let's say.
Right.
All right. Thank you for attending tonight. Meeting adjourned. Do we have a motion?
You've got a, you've got a new public comment at the end for gone, but that's, did anyone else sign up?
No. No, they've all spoken.
Okay. So, I would just...
Since no one's signed up for the public comment on the non-agend items, we'll go over, we'll skip to the, to adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion made by Mr. Alfred, second by Ms. Bell. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.